This is going to work in terms of orders. We've got questions, and coming in, Maggie has collected them. So if you've got any more, find Maggie. Questions on our card? We'll do our best to get as many as we can. The rules of the debate are we will have opening remarks for each of the candidates. It'll be Drew Strong to figure out who is going to go in one order, and they go in your order as they appear here on the chairs. And they will each have a five-minute opener. Then we're going to go into questions. I'm going to break this to you now, and then each candidate has one minute to answer each question. Now, that is very short. But revenue is important, and communication skills is important in our elected officials, so hopefully they will be able to rise to that challenge. And our other events will feature slightly longer question-and-answer period. We'll get through as many questions as we can, then we'll go to closing remarks, and there will be two minutes each for closing remarks. We'll go in the same order, so we will start with one candidate, but we will end with a different candidate. So with all of that, I'm going to turn things over to our first board candidate to speak. Who is Mr. David Pretty?
Thank you. Hands free and talk with my hands, right? So, good morning, good evening, Arlington Democrats. First off, I'd like to acknowledge all of the candidates in the room, so thank you for being here. I am David Pretty, and so nice to be up here again. I'm a lifelong Arlingtonian. I actually swam next door back in this with the YMCA, when it was back when it was YMCA school, growing up, so it's good to be back. Lifelong Arlingtonian, I grew up in APS, too, Lowrings, TJ, Wakefield. Now my kids are following that same path. I have an elementary school at Fleet, and I have a seventh grader over at TJ where I'm the president of the PTA. I'm currently a stay-at-home dad, because my wife and I decided to put her career at the forefront, and therefore, I'm taking care of our hope of post-prize resource to our kids. Previously, my previous professional background is in the elevator business, and it's uniquely positioned me to understand the ins and outs of APS. Running bridges in Burbank and Santa Barbara in Northern Virginia has allowed me to manage budgets, doing profit and loss, multi-million dollar operations, working with labor organizations, various aspects of construction. I'm a draw upon that business side to focus on APS and make fiscally responsible decisions. I am part of various organizations related to school activities, County Council of PTAs, NAACP Education Committee, Black Parents of Arlington, ACI, Advisor Council on Construction, which they have a meeting tonight, so I'm missing that one, as you can see. And I tutor third, fourth, and fifth graders two days a week over at Arlington Middle. I bring these examples to show that through my advocacy and actions, I am able to see through the lens of students, parents, community members, teachers, to provide a path forward for all to benefit. Equity is part of my platform. I know, it's a nice buzzword, right? Well, fortunately, I have a plan for equity throughout APS, and it begins with four steps. First is to hire teachers that represent the diversity of the student population. The second piece is to teach cultural competence, have training for all APS employees, not just teachers, not just staff. We're talking about bus drivers and any third-party vendors instead of put onto APS, onto our campus. Make sure, the third one is make sure the new CDEIO, the Chief Diversity Equity Inclusion Officer, is not a check-the-box position. Make sure that they have some structure, including what we hired the new superintendent coming along, so that we can actually enforce some equity planning. And then number four is create metrics to how do we judge each other? Well, we can go with a strategic plan, and we can create metrics that way. Next is proper planning. Proper planning and projections need to take place in order to shape the future proactively. Now, there have been developments in the past three months that have made it impossible to plan for the future. Specifically, the county manager, Marc Schwartz, has released a letter detailing a list of sites that can be used for APS planning purposes. If you want that letter, send me an email, info@prettyforschoolboard.com, and I will get it to you. And we see that with milestones like these, the current school board and county board have made strides to collectively talk and come up with solutions. As your elected official, I plan on continuing to solidify those relationships, so we can make strides towards moving the county together with both boards. Proper planning also includes creating facilities that are accessible to all parties and are conducive to teachers having a quality work environment. Understanding their perspectives when designing buildings and retrofitting other facilities are a priority. Finally, communication. We need to be open and transparent with the community on how we make decisions, what factors are involved, and how these decisions affect the entire county. I will listen to your ideas with an open mind and with sincerity, and together we will be open and honest about the direction we take and have everyone involved in the process. So with summary, I'm asking for your vote in the Democratic Caucus May 7th and May 9th. I'm asking for your vote because I'm the right person who has a history with APS, growing up in Arlington. With kids in middle school and elementary school, I have a perspective that no one else breaks to the table. I'm involved and active in the inner workings of APS, and I have a business acumen which is a much needed presence in dealing with $700 million budgets. So I've influenced enough people to make this run at the school board with confidence, endorsed by former delegate and school board member Karen Darner, endorsed by current commissioner of the Rev. Dean Roy, and by current chair of the school board, Tommy Calento. I ask that you join us and vote for me, David Pretty, in May.
Thank you, David. Next up, Christina Diaz Torres.
Can you hear me?
No.
Maybe?
Yes.
Actually, before we start, you're up to the top. If you have an empty seat next to you, just further to the right hand, there's a lot of people in the back who might want a seat, so if you want a seat, come down. Good evening and buenas noches. I'm Christina Diaz Torres, and I'm running for school board, because I believe we can build an APS that serves all of our students well. The students in Arlington deserve a board with the experience, the tenacity, and the vision to make APS the number-one district in the Commonwealth for all of our kids, no matter their race, their gender, their sexual orientation, their family context, or their legal status. And I've built a career doing just that. I was a teacher. I have a master's degree in curriculum instruction, I'm an education policy professional, and I'm an active member of this community. I have shown that I can not only advocate for students, I can deliver results. The last time I came before you, I told you about my experience. Today, I'm going to tell you about what I know. I know what it's like to be a student on the margins. I grew up in a family that was transient because of my parents' jobs. Every move meant learning a new school, making new friends, figuring out a new system. It was really hard on me, but it was particularly difficult for my younger brother, because he got it. My brother has a diagnosed learning disability. For years, I watched my parents try to get him the support he needed, whether that was paying for outside testing, expensive tutoring, or advocating for his teachers. It wasn't until college that his teachers figured out what he needed to learn. That flipped a switch for my brother. And suddenly, the sullen, angry, frustrated teenager transformed into a motivated and passionate learner who now owns his own school business. I believe every student in APS deserves the same opportunity, but many students in Arlington are not getting what they need. Year after year, we see program evaluations that say the same thing. APS has some amazing bright spots and wonderful resources, but our student experience varies dramatically from school to school and even from classroom to classroom. We need to do more to ensure that students across the system have access to the support they need to be on grade level, meet their own goals, no matter what school or classroom they happen to be in. I know what it's like to feel like an outsider in my own community. Growing up Latina in New England, it wasn't quite like that for the rest of my peers. My skin was darker, my hair was curlier, my family spoke two languages at home. It was hard for me to fit in, and I struggled fully in even schools that were relatively diverse. When I was in middle school, my family made the decision to move to Puerto Rico. And suddenly, I was at a school where everyone looked like me, but I still didn't fit in. Somehow, I was too Latina for New England, but too New England for Puerto Rico. Reconciling both sides of my identity has been a lifelong journey, and I'm not going to say that I've got it figured out. However, having a school climate that was welcoming and affirming of my identities would have made worlds of difference. Our children are facing complex issues about their own identity on a daily basis. They're wrestling with race, class, ability, gender, sexual orientation, legal status, family context, socioeconomic statuses. Our schools need to be a place where they can learn the social-emotional skills to be able to cope, where hate speech is soundly rejected, where discipline centers are under supportive justice, and where families feel seen, heard, and welcomed. I know what it's like to be a young person in today's workforce. We are no longer in an age where you can apply to a first job and grow in an organization for 20 or 30 years. That is the reality that our students are facing when they leave APS, and the time is now to rethink how we're preparing for the world. We need to work with our partners in local industry to identify what they're seeking in candidates and ensure that our students are learning those things before they leave the four walls of their school. No matter what field they want to pursue, our graduates should be empathetic listeners, strategic thinkers, good collaborators, excellent communicators, and engaged citizens. And finally, I know Arlington. When I moved here, I got involved right away, because I wanted to know how my local government worked, what was working, what was not, and for whom. I've served beyond commissions on the county and the school board side. I got involved in campaigns for candidates and politicians. I have knocked on your doors, I have sat in your living rooms, I have listened to your stories. We have celebrated victories together, and we have cried together as we watched attack after attack on our values. I firmly believe that if any community in the country has the resources, talent, and ability to be an example, it's Arlington. We can do this. I want to serve you next on the school board to get that work started. I want to do my part to build upon the bright spots in APS and find ways to efficiently address their challenges. I am Christina Diaz Torres. I'm asking for your vote in the caucus on May 7th and 9th. I look forward to hearing your questions. Thank you so much for coming out today.
Hello. My name is Steven Krieger. I'm running for school board, because I have two young children, a third grader at elementary school, and a three-year-old at home, and I want to bring the perspective of a young family to the school board. I want to make sure that our school system is set up for long-term success for everyone, regardless of race, gender, religion, nationality, gender identity, legal status, physical and mental challenges, and our socioeconomic status. To me, the biggest issues facing our school system have really very little to do with education policy, and are really about school board accountability and what I call APS operations. Let me start with accountability. When I'm elected... Let me start with accountability. When I'm elected, I want you to hold me accountable. On the chairs, you have my campaign flyer. I list specific actions, some are short-term, some are medium-term, some are long-term, but they are concrete and specific. That was very intentional. I want you to keep that flyer and bring it back to me in four years, and hold me accountable if I don't come through. On the APS operational side, there are at least six areas that I'm going to hopefully talk about tonight through this introduction or through the Q and A. Teacher compensation, equity, transparency, a budget, capacity, and student wellness. Almost any APS teacher could leave Arlington, get paid something more in another district nearby. This is the reason why we have a very high turnover rate for our younger teachers. To fix this, we need to start increasing teacher compensation by using the savings from when older teacher retires is replaced by a younger teacher who gets paid less money. I personally went back from the last 10 years of budgets and calculated that this savings totaled $132 million. I was disappointed to find out that only $27 million went back to the teachers. The remaining $105 million went to everything else. And this is why we have our current problem regarding teacher compensation, but there's also the solution to fix it going forward. And if we don't fix it, our schools will not continue to be great. Currently, we have a system that results in a lower percentage of minority students enrolling in adult classes, a higher number of minority students classified special needs, and comparatively more severe punishments in discipline for students of color and for students with disabilities. Specifically, student disabilities, who make up approximately 19% of the student population, including IEPs and 504s, make up 42% of the suspensions. To fix the equity issues, we have to acknowledge the institutional bias in the benefits of privilege, whether it's gender, race, or socioeconomic status. Next, we have to be better about tracking our data related to equity and making it all publicly available. Thank you. We need to have indicators or benchmarks in all of our future plans, not just some of them. We need to compare the data against our indicators to know if we're actually solving the problems we're trying to solve, like looking up here together. And if we're not doing it, we need to reevaluate what we're doing. I've spoken at school board meetings, and there is nothing worse than speaking to a group of people who have already made up their minds. While APS may be hearing our words, there is a feeling that APS is not really listening to us. To test my hypothesis, I went back to look at all the school board votes on action items since 2017. There were 152 votes. Only one didn't pass, and that's because with the 2-2 vote, if one member wasn't there. If the school board was doing their due diligence, I'd expect a handful of recommendations to fail over a three-year period, and that simply isn't happening. So either there's a lack of transparency, or the school board is never stamping recommendations instead of serving as a check on their word. Our middle school and high school students need our help. 11% of middle school students do not identify an adult they would go to if they were upset. Fewer than one in three teens feel they can talk to their parent or caregiver about difficult topics. Approximately 30% of high school students have regular feelings of homelessness or sadness. We need to make sure our schools are properly staffed with counselors based on the school's need, not just X number of teachers or counselors per school based on size. I know I'm almost out of time, so I just want to take this last few seconds to acknowledge my friend Simone Walker, let her know we are sorry if we're not up here. We wish you very, very good luck.
Hello, Democrats. My Joe. Good evening, fellow Democrats. My name is Terrell Sims II. Some of you know me from my local statewide and national Democratic work, and others from the work that we've done together on several campaign trails over the past 15 years. But many of you may not know my background and experience in education, particularly here in Arlington. When I began down the path of education and youth advocacy in Arlington in 2006, I tutored and mentored in the county in various programs at Hoffman-Boston, Drew, Williamsburg, Wakefield, and Army Hall. I worked with the Team Network Board at AHC's Team Tuning Program, where I received its 2018 Volunteer of the Year Award, and currently serve on its Board of Directors. With my mentor, the late Dr. Thomas Williams, we formed Parents Ally for Student Success, where we assisted parents in APS student advocacy, and computer for students, providing donated computers to needy families. As years progressed, I began serving on various APS committees, such as the Face of Whole Child Working Groups and the previous Strategic Plans Steering Committee. I've chaired the Superintendent's Committee to Limiting Achievement Gap for the past several school years, which we recently re-titled Equity and Excellence. Our work on the committee led to better teaching hiring practices, implementing data metrics to measure and track student academic progress, and when the current strategic plan was crafted, my team ensured that equity, inclusion, and opportunity were clearly positioned throughout all the strategic plan for academic achievement, did not fall solely on the shoulders of instruction. One of my proudest moments was shining a spotlight on APS's inequities within the Drew Grading Program, which led to the Montessori Program retaining its own building and the undoing of BAGD Segregation Policy, with the full return of this school to Dr. Charles Drew Elementary School back to the great valid community. My years of education advocacy have led me to serve the role of both friendly advisor to county school board members, APS senior staff, principals, and parent advocacy groups and PTAs in creating consensus and policy and messaging, and most importantly, solving problems. Going back further in my career, many of you may not realize that as an Army officer deployed to Baghdad's second-largest district of 1.25 billion people, I oversaw the formation of the school PTAs and monthly assessments focusing on security and educational resources. For over 30 schools, I allocated and supervised $1 million in school refurbishments. Now that you know how serious I am about education, let me talk about what we can do. The success of every Arlington student is paramount. Increasing academic and professional opportunities, assisting parents in their advocacy efforts, and improving faculty retention, recruitment, and morale is a path there. Among the issues of which I'm focusing are, one, implement North America's Building Trade Unions Apprenticeship Readiness Programs and its multi-craft core curriculum to APS to maximize career opportunities for our students. Two, formally partner with area businesses and government organizations. Our region is rich in financial and intellectual capital that we should access to improve our shortcomings. For example, every child should have access to preschool. No child should be hungry during the school day. Enhancing the APS curriculum, real-life internship opportunities for our students who want and need them. Three, increase teacher compensation by providing much-needed pay and cold raises. And four, improve APS operations to maximize budget dollars by conducting an internal audit and identifying efficiencies, and improve our partnership with the county when it comes to spending and contracting. I look forward to discussing with you these and other critical APS issues. I'm Terrell Sims II, and I ask for your vote for the Arlington School Board ACDC endorsement. Thank you.
Well, I am Sandy Moe, and I'm here to tell you that I think it's time that we have an educator to serve on our Arlington County School Board. Why? Because our decisions about what happens inside our schools should reflect the realities of what it is like to teach and learn in our schools day in and day out. With 40 years of experience inside and outside the classroom, 20 of them right here in Arlington, I have lived the impacts that school board decisions made on us. I have a demonstrated ability to successfully communicate with and influence constituencies both in the schools and in the community. I have proven skills on the business side of schools by managing technology, infrastructure planning, acquisition, and budget for my schools in both Prince William County and in Arlington Public Schools. Thought leadership and instructional design and integrity and integration of technology with curriculum, which I have shared locally, regionally, and nationally, sets me apart. As a teacher and a parent, I know that each child may need something a little different to achieve success. That is the definition of equity for me. Everyone from the school board down to every person in our buildings must be committed to teaching every child, your child. I believe effective reinforcement at an early age is fundamental to solving our opportunity gap. We need a toolbox of instructional strategies in our classrooms. We need to have a floor, a common implementation of effective practice across all the schools, and we need to hold our school administrators responsible for establishing and growing that common floor of adoptive practice. There are many hard choices to be considered, whether on boundaries, funding, or initiatives. The school board must insist on transparency in data and budget, along with early impagement in the process for these difficult decisions, and no proposal should be considered without a concrete way to assess its impact. All the candidates are running on about the same platform, really. It's equity, it's support for meaning, it's good data, decision-making, it's having the right data. We all recognize the pressures of increasing enrollment. We all have a vision for continued excellence in Arlington Public Schools that matches the values of our community. What distinguishes us is who we are. So here's what sets me apart: experience matters. Because when we propose to use the old Ed Center, that white building next to Washington Liberty High School, to add 600 seats to our school, I understand the questions in classroom scheduling, student movement, and even just the size of the existing cafeteria makes that proposal more challenging than it sounds. Experience matters when a new teacher professional development initiative is introduced for English-speaking learners or social-emotional strategies. I start doing the calculations on where that training fits with existing professional development for shelter place, CPR, EpiHans, and all the other requirements that teachers have to go through in order to stay up to date on their skill set in the classroom. Experience matters, because when capacity challenges arise, I know that there are solutions other than just construction. If WML had looked at floating teachers, maximizing the classroom space, in other words, using classrooms six, seven periods a day, would we have needed to spend $6 million on the ANCAPs, making teacher workrooms for those teachers? They're not being utilized that way. We could have saved that money till we actually had the population, and maybe we'd just utilize the classrooms differently than we would have had it ever to be needed. Well, experience isn't everything, of course. I think vision and imagination and innovation matter. I was doing multimedia hypermedia in the classroom before the web brought such things to everyone's attention. I was the lead teacher on a project to bring the Viroptic Network to Woodbridge High School. I was the lead teacher in Arlington when the iPads and tablets were first adopted. That was about nine years ago. I ran a two-year pilot with a cohort of teachers at WML to develop an implementation plan for diversion into the classroom. I may be pragmatic, but I think I love to dream and use those tools with my teachers. After 40 years as an educator, I have a perspective that are on our schools that are unique to my fellow candidates. Priorities establish by the school board impact our students, our faculty, our staff, as well as our families. As a school board member, I want to use my experience to help shape the future goals of APS.
Okay. You guys asked a lot of great questions with emphasis on a lot. We will not be able to get through them all tonight, but good news, we are holding that second event, so we will hold on to those questions, and we'll ask them in the candidate forum. So I'm going to get through as many as I can. We've combined some questions in order to cover as much ground as possible, but if we don't hear your questions tonight, we'll attempt to get through it in the candidate forum. Okay, so I'm going to go to the first question. As a reminder, we're going to start this question with David answering first, we'll go down the row, and then the next question will start with Christina, then the next special service, even, and so on, so we'll go around, Robert. The first question is this: "With the current tumult of APS, competition turnover, continued increase student enrollment, budget cuts, etc., teacher morale is low. What is your vision for recruitment of new teachers and the retention of the excellent educators that we are in danger of losing?"
Thank you. So my plan for retention of the teachers is not only part of, everybody here so far has talked about increasing the teacher pay, but what we have to talk about is increasing the work environment that the teacher has. So my plan is to actually go in and figure out what we need to do to help the teachers out. We had a situation a couple months back where we had a teacher who, she lost an infant, and we don't have a bereavement policy in APS, so that needs to change. Now luckily, there were a bunch of other teachers that pulled their lead together so that she could have lead herself. These are the types of things that we need to change in order to make our teachers and keep them and retain them.
I'm going to actually plus-one to the idea of improving the policies that govern our teachers' lifestyles and how their working environments function. The other thing that I think that we need to incorporate is much more teacher voice. When we ask our teachers what they need, they know. They are very aware, they are very conscious of what the limitations on their time is and what they can and cannot do within the limitations of a 24-hour day, because everyone is limited by that. And so we need to listen to them methodically and understanding what it is that they're asking for, and then design policies that prioritize those things.
Thank you. I mean, I think compensation is probably the number-one issue, but see maybe we can get the compensation issue fixed, which I hope we can do this budget cycle. There are other issues that we can do for morale. For example, it used to be that teachers would get offers when they came to job fairies and... and hired on the spot. Now, that's not the case any longer. And teachers are also, from what I've heard, are feeling like they are robots. They're in the classroom, using the same curriculum year after year, with no flexibility, and the same curriculum is being taught at Key as opposed to Takahoe, as opposed to anywhere else in elementary schools. And so giving the teachers the freedom to do what they do and use their passion is really, really important. And the last thing we need to do is we need to have training specific for the teachers. You can't just come into a classroom and say, "All these teachers should get this training." That's not appropriate. It has to be, it's like there's student-specific assistance, there should be teacher-specific assistance.
I look at the morale from two perspectives. The first, obviously, we want teachers to have pay raises. God knows I do. But if we know with the current budget cycle is to be done with a twenty-seven-million-dollar deficit, right? So in the short term, right now, we know that we're not going to be able to provide those pay raises, at least this cycle. What we could do is be creative with how we incentivize teachers. So for example, working with the county and the housing department, or at least with our young teachers, the new teachers, to provide them affordable housing, so they can at least live within the county. The most important piece, though, though pay is important, is that it's leadership. So right now, we're going through the new superintendent hiring process, and we need to work with the communities and work with Moni and with Tanya to ensure that we hire, the APS hires, a superintendent that motivates their teachers to love and respect and cherish their students.
Thank you. Sandy? So I couldn't agree more. It's pay. All right, it's taken us fifteen years to be uncompetitive in terms of our pay, not necessarily because it's all been Arlington's fault, because the state of Virginia itself has never really done its share of paying into what they should for public education. Second, I also believe that we need to do more to support our teachers. They are under a lot of pressure to acquire as many domains as possible to deal with multiple difficulties that kids have, everything from their social-emotional needs as well as to their literacy needs. So now, we have lots of staff development for them, but which ones are we going to prioritize? Where are we going to say, "These are the ones you absolutely have to do now, and we will take care of these as we go along"? Sustained professional development is key.
Good job. Nice job. One minute. Okay, the next question for the group is this: If the General Assembly passes and the governor signs a collective bargaining for public employees now, do you commit to support collective bargaining for our own school, for APS employees? And we'll start with Christina.
I do. I actually taught in a district that had collective bargaining, and ultimately, it benefited the teachers. It did cause some tension between the district and the union, but it was important that they become colleagues and work together and become close partners. I do think, and I believe as a Democrat, in the value of unions, to be able to protect workers, teachers are workers as well, and I do think that it would be important that if the bill does pass, that we work with the union to make sure that we're creating the work environments, providing the pay, providing the professional development, everything that we talked about in the previous question, so that our teachers feel supported and they feel valued, and they can deliver the best results for students.
I mean, the bill passes, it passes, and the union competes, and we get a union thing. My relationship is not with the unions. I don't have an issue with the unions. I think if we had a union, my hope is that we wouldn't be in this teacher compensation mess that we're in right now. There was no union, so we are where we are. My concern, my only concern, is that we all know that there are teachers currently in APS who are not pulling their weight. It is not fair to those students, and it's not fair to their colleagues. And as long as the union, whatever something happens in place, doesn't make it any harder than it is to make sure that those teachers are pulling their weight, then I would be happy to support it.
Simple answer, yes. Collective bargaining would power our teachers to be able to advocate for themselves, and hopefully, if they actually had a functioning union, then we had, we were able to get rid of right to work within this Commonwealth, then we wouldn't have the pay issues that we have now for our teachers.
I think the answer is pretty pat, and I think we all know that we would like to see our teachers have the opportunities for collective bargaining. I believe unions are a strength. If you've watched any of the teachers who have been striking across the country, it's wearing red today, red for, okay. I mean, when West Virginia went out on strike, when Arizona went out on strike, when Oklahoma went out on strike, yeah. I mean, I believe very firmly that our teachers want the best for our students. They do not want anything less. And they also address that when they are on strike. Not that they're going on strike, I'm just saying.
Great clap, Christina. Okay. Great, that was a quick one. All right, next question. Oh, sorry, David.
David? Right in my wheelhouse, Jill. So I am, being in the elevator business, I dealt with unions all the time. I've dealt on the collective bargaining side, I know how to deal with grievances, I've dealt with I U E C reps, that was the labor union for the elevator division. And I've also dealt in meetings with praises and compliments where we have to, those are rare, obviously, but I've dealt with work stoppages, and I know exactly intimately how to deal with labor unions. If we had labor unions and collective bargaining, usually you collect a bargain, your pay scale in there. So that would solve the pay scale issue, because it would already be written out in a five-year, however, whatever term that they choose, on what they're going to be paid. So it would be an easy solution for that, too.
Okay. Sorry for missing you, Paul. Try to do better. Okay, the next question. How do you feel about the recent school board decision to keep APS program to other facilities, and how would you implement, you know, the carrot series?
That was fantastic, Jill. Thank you too, Jill. Look, they got it wrong. I mean, there's no two ways about this. The school board has a pound of policy on boundaries. For the school board to tell us, as intelligent individuals, that they can move three schools and twenty-five-hundred students and not have to follow their own boundary policy is ridiculous. It's intellectually dishonest. If they had gone through their policy and followed their policy, we would have had information months ago that we have today that saying the move is going to cost three million dollars. That would have been nice to know, six months ago, maybe even two months ago. We would have had to consider diversity in their move. They've patently said for weeks and months, "We're not going to consider diversity at this stage in the process. This is all the same process." You can't just carve out an exception and say, "Oh, we're not going to follow our policy now because we're going to call this a pre-boundary policy." Not the way it works. So I would have voted against it.
Thank you.
I never understood why they went through the quote-unquote SWAP process to begin with, primarily since we know they're going through the C I P process next year, which means that there's a likelihood that elementary school boundaries are going to be changed, which means that because of the SWAP, we're going to be changing boundaries within this, next year and the following year. So being that we are going through the C I P process next year, I would have, if moves were to have been made, it would have been done, it should have been done afterwards.
You're going to ask again, it's getting my soft voice when you're not talking.
All right, I came out very early on and said I was disappointed that they were going to go on the decision of moving Key. I believe that as a community school, everybody wanted what was good for those people in the community. They have found their places, and they have made a relationship with everyone. I understand, however, that, you know, you cannot make all the people happy all the time. I know that's a stupid way to answer something, but that's actually the truth, right? I would have been much happier if they had decided to take these moves in conjunction with the boundary changes at the same time, so that they could actually see what the impact of making these moves were going to be on all of us. That was my position.
So I was very public that I was against the move, against the say no, the vote no on that piece. However, I do know why the school board did it. They did it because they needed the move, they needed the money to be in the bond, and that's why they made the vote. So it's very clear why, but, oh, I lost it, right? But as, I believe I'm the, I'm the only one up here, but I've been through a boundary process. I've been to change schools. We've been through, last year, when we switched our school, eighty percent of our school went from Patrick Henry to the new Fleet, and we lost, we lost kids to Drew, we lost students to Hoppin-Boston. So I've been through it. I've been through the fractured PTAs, I've been through all the relationships you build with the families and how they, and you have to just leave them and just see them at the sporting events now. So I've lived through this, and I can tell you that you still have to go through with a positive attitude. You have to move forward with that community feel, and that's what it takes to get a career.
I agree with that. I think the decision does make sense when you see particularly the projections that came out subsequently to the vote. And you look at that Raza-Boston corridor, and you see the overcrowding that's coming down the pike, not the literal pike, but down the metaphorical pike. And you, the decision makes sense to me rationally. However, it did cause a lot of trauma, and I know that this community has gone through that experience, and we have gone, we have a lot of emotions right now that are tied up in this process. Oh, wait.
That's only thirty seconds.
Okay. It's like, how, that one probably passed. We have a lot that we've gone through as a community, and there have been a lot of conversations, there's a lot of people who are very upset. So now that trigger, the question is, how do we respond to this? How do we, as a community, can begin the healing process so that we can then go through the boundary process that's going to come very, very soon? And we're taking everything into consideration at that point, given the vote that was already chosen. We're good.
That was it? Okay, great. All right, great, thank you. Next question. There hasn't a documented uptick in mean speech, an ethic-based aggression in APS, opposed to bullying and sexual harassment. As a school board member, what will you do to assure that these situations are understood, addressed, and monitored and appropriated?
Well, having dealt with harassment, bullying issues at the schools with kids, recognizing that APS does have an anti-bullying policy, I've realized and discovered that there's no meat to it. So we all, as a community, and elected leaders, and the general of the win, need to ensure that there's actually meat, actually meat to that policy.
I'm pretty psyched right now. In the House and the Senate, they've just passed two bills in which they have said that no longer will a school fight in the cafeteria, or in the hallway, or a kid showing up drunk at homecoming, is going to be jailed. They're not going to go, they're going to let the principal deal with the situation. We're not going to be a prison, you know, we're not going to be that pipeline to prison school system. That said, I believe there's other ways that we deal with discipline. Punishment does not necessarily fix anything. Punishment doesn't really correct anything. What we really need is to figure out what happened when that bullying occurred, what was that harassment taking place? And to that end, there are some programs going on right now within our high schools where our counselors are getting involved with social justice, which means they bring the kids together who are having a problem, and they sit down and have to talk it out. Some happen better than others, but that's the step to take, in my mind.
All right. So hate speech is real. We've dealt with it at Jefferson, we've dealt with it at Fleet, we've dealt with it at Wakefield. And as a result, I actually coordinated a program, a coordinated program to combat hate speech. And we did it about a week and a half ago, and we had the NAACP, and we had the American Jewish Committee, and we had Black Parents of Arlington, and we had the AGIA in as well. And we all came around, it was a community event to build community. And that's how you educate people, build a community, and that's how you figure out the process moving forward. The piece about it, though, is in what I've found out, is doing my research, is that it's not the anti-bullying policy, it's the non-discrimination policy. And I have actually had conversations with Dr. Allen about what we have to do moving forward, about how there is a policy on it, but what does that PIP really mean? And that's where we need to meet on the bone there, is trying to figure out what that policy really is. I would like that.
Yeah, I am going to continue to echo a couple of things that have been said up here. The restorative justice work that is starting to launch in our schools is great, it's a start, we've got to continue building upon it. We have to make sure that the policies that are in place are actually being implemented, and really have to make sure that they have teeth. The biggest thing, however, is shifting our mindset. The only reason that we're seeing hate speech in schools is because we are seeing that hate speech is acceptable in the community at large. We need to make sure that we are modeling as adults, we are modeling as adults that hate speech is unacceptable, that it is not a way to interact with others ever. And we are modeling for students how to deal with conflict, and how to deal with points where they might have interactions with others, how to liaise when there might be some instances of hate speech, and be an advocate for others. And we need to make sure that our teachers are getting the support that they need to facilitate those conversations. That can be really, really difficult when you are watching these conversations happen as a teacher, because it's hard for you to figure out how to step in. Our teachers need the support to be able to interact.
I mean, the first step is to acknowledge that it's real, and unfortunately, it is real, and it doesn't appear to have gotten any better in the last ten years. And so when you have just in 2020, an antisemitic incident in Wakefield, and another antisemitic incident in Thomas Jefferson, the first step is saying, "Yeah, this is an issue. How can we fix it?" But the next step is to make sure that we're just applying the same data-driven analysis to hate speech and bullying as we apply to everything else. Just because it's arguably a social issue doesn't mean that we have to remove the data from it. We need to see why this isn't working. Look at our programs. Is the hate speech going up, going down? Are we getting the data that's being released to us? Can we evaluate whether the programs and policies that we have are making any difference? And until we can start getting into those numbers, having those being released, and transparent, and public, we're just going to be spinning our wheels.
APS is very costly to taxpayers, and it has a twenty-five-million-dollar budget gap. Do you have any specific plans to cut costs regarding the quality of our school services?
That was not a question I was expecting. I guess I should have been better prepared. That there is a fact of budget gap is apparent, because they're coming at it, Cynthia Johnson's coming at it as a needs-based budget. This is what we need to have. We have to have these things. And as a result, we're not going to give up on the teacher salary increase. Teacher salary increases always get kicked down the curb because it's the easiest piece of the budget they can pull money back out of. I don't support that. I think we need that COA, and I think that we need to have those teachers get a step increase, not just this year, but the years to come. What to cut? You know, there is not a line item budget that we can look at right now based on what has been presented to the school board. So I'm not sure exactly where we're looking. I do know that some of the requests for more personnel have been denied, so that they can talk about the Tier One and Tier Two. And I'm using it, thank you. They're already looking at what can be cut from the Tier One and Tier Two requests for personnel that are more support people. I'm not sure. That's always the best idea either. I'm hopeful that the Arlington County government will step up and support our schools away. I believe they need to be supported.
All right, thanks, Jill. All right, so it's budget season. So we know that the way, the breakdown of our budget, it's seventy-seven-point-eight percent for salaries, it's eight-point-three percent for debt service. So you can't touch those, right? That leaves about fourteen percent. I'm not a math guy, so not right now. So it leaves about fourteen percent to deal with. So what are we going to do with that fourteen percent? We've all said on stage that we think that the teacher compensation should increase. So that'll, that's part of that percentage. So then what are we going to cut? We have choices, right? We have, we can cut, we can make, we can make operational savings by doing energy savings. We can make it through transportation, redoing our transportation. We can make it through redistributing the planning factors, which is probably the one that Sandy was referring to earlier. And then we can do it with the personalized learning devices. What are we doing with those, with those debt equipment? And then this comes with collaboration with the county, what systems they have that we can, that we can actually have some dual help with. And once we do all that, then we can figure out what we want to cut.
So this is my favorite question. Oh, that one, oh, okay. Did I turn my mic off? Yeah. That was, sorry. This is my favorite question. It's budget season, it's my favorite time of year. I spent this weekend with the budget, it was a great time. I'm on page three-twenty-five. So I'm on the Budget Advisory Council, I've been on the Budget Advisory Council for three years. Every single year, we go line item by line item, and we identify recommendations, where to cut, where to move, where to rejigger. We, unfortunately, missing the meeting today because I'm here. However, the things that we're going to be looking at this year are going to be some of the things that my colleagues have mentioned. Dreambox is one of the examples that keeps coming up over and over and over again. Are we actually getting a return in terms of student learning on these things? These are the questions that we need to be asking ourselves so that we can then decide where we're going to come.
So for the last ten years, we've had budget deficits in eight of the last ten years. So in only two years did we get an actual budget where there was no cutting needed. The first thing that the school board needs to do is to start asking for some more money. When you compare the amount of money that the school board asks for in Arlington compared to school boards in neighboring jurisdictions, our amount is not as high. So we should first, we're asking for some more money. Second, every year, the school board reallocates funds. During the last ten years, APS reallocated $262 million for approximately $23 million each year on average. So, to some extent, it's cutting, but to some extent, it's also doing, being more responsible with your money. Recently, APS approved $421,000 to do site studies on fourteen different sites. There is zero chance we're building on fourteen sites. There is zero chance we're building on seven sites. So take a, a more careful analysis of how we're spending the funds.
So it's not about what we cut, it's about how we maximize our dollars. So, I chaired the County Fiscal Affairs Advisory Committee back when we had the international economic crisis, back in 2008. It was pretty interesting to see how the county and APS functioned from a budget and spending perspective before the crash and then how they started, and how they spun and spent after the crash. As I stated in my, in my opening remarks, APS seriously needs to do an internal audit because we, APS has to start looking at itself and how it maximizes its dollars. Once we, once we do the internal audit, we can find our efficiencies and those deficiencies, figure out what operations we have that we can pass over to the county and then figure out how we can better partner with the county. So for instance, contracting on the Cyren IT set, from Cyren IT to Penns, the entire gamut. Because right now, the fact we're facing a $27 million deficit, next year is not going to be any better. You know, this, this coming summer, we practically don't have summer school, you know? Now we're talking about being rid of Fless for next year. There's nothing else to cut.
All right, next question. Back to David. Are there limits on campaign tactics that are appropriate in a school board race?
Are there limits on the campaign tactics? I would say yes. I would say, is my mic on? Sorry. You know what? I guess I should turn, I guess I should turn it on then. So yeah, so.
Let me just repeat the question whatever we heard. Are there limits on the campaign tactics that are appropriate in a school board race?
Okay. As, as someone who's been through a campaign before for school board, I can tell you that school board is a little bit different than your regular run-of-the-mill elected office. And I say that because there's a theory, the, the thinking is that it should be, it's a nonpartisan position so that they shouldn't take, be taken over by a specific party. As a result, at the end of the day, what we are all here for is to benefit the kids, to benefit Arlington, to benefit the teachers and everybody involved with APS. And that's a different, it's a different mindset than say, a political position like as a senator that's dealing with so many other factors. So I would say yes, it is a different, you have to take a different, is there a limit? Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. Maybe? Yes. Very good. Absolutely, there are limits to what is appropriate in a campaign. And I think it comes down to if you, what, your actions are going to speak louder than your words. Whatever you choose to do in a campaign and whatever you choose to act and let your supporters act, that is, that is a direct reflection of your values, whether you like it or not. I have to make sure that in this campaign, myself and my team are reflecting the highest values that I ascribe to. They are things like integrity in interactions, empathy in listening, really conscientious conversations with folks, especially when we disagree. These are the things that I ascribe to and I would hope that my colleagues on this stage, if anyone running for office, either now or in the future, would just figure out what their values are and ascribe to the best, highest values that get here.
There should absolutely be limits. If you want to come at me and say, Steven, you don't have any high school kids, what do you know about high schools? Fine. Fair, fair point. Noted. But this campaign should be about the candidate's substantive policy. It should not be an exercise where one candidate or any other member of the public tries to tear down or raise up that camp, that campaign at the expense of somebody else. This is not a place for personal attacks, this is a place for substantive debate upon the issues. And anything other than that, I find to be terribly, terribly inappropriate.
So, as a leader of our Democratic Party, I advise candidates, and I, especially at the local level, I remind them and say, guys, it's Arlington. Or if I'm in Woodbridge, it's Woodbridge, very small town. You know, this is not House of Cards, it's not West Wing, right? It's Arlington, it's grassroots politics, right? So it's about meeting people, talking to them, getting to know them, what they care about, you know, working towards those issues, right? I have, you know, we have, you know, a foundation as Democrats, you know, social justice, economic, you know, economic fairness. And so, it's always about the issues and about the people, and it should never be negative.
I couldn't be, I couldn't be more of a neophyte in all this, having never done a thing like this in my entire life. Okay? So, I don't even really know the correct response here or if there is a correct response for me. I am simply presenting to you what I think we might value in me to be on the school board. I have nothing, I don't think that there's anything else to say.
All right, next question. Many families pay for tutoring and reading and other instructional areas, but poor families and ESL and English with a second language families cannot necessarily pay for tutoring. What would you do as an APS school board member to bring APS instruction in line, in alignment with science-based reading instruction and address those issues?
Can you repeat the last part of the question again? Sorry.
What would you do to, what would you do to bring APS instruction in alignment with science-based reading instruction and to address those issues about access to tutoring or reading? I can repeat the whole question again, because I didn't actually add it this one. Many families pay for tutoring and reading and other instructional areas, but poor families and ESL families cannot pay, cannot necessarily pay for tutoring. What would you do to bring APS instruction in alignment with science-based reading and instruction and address those issues?
I know exactly what that feels like because I know, I've watched my family do that for years. I know exactly what it looks like when you see one parent's entire salary go towards tutoring. And that's what happened to my brother and that's what happened to my family. And that is unacceptable. We need to raise the bar when it comes to instruction in Arlington, making sure that we are ascribing to the best and latest research and what the, what curriculum experts say is that we should be teaching. Sorry, I keep like moving and goes away. It all comes down to holding each other accountable, making sure that we are picking the best resources, the best books, the best curricula, et cetera, and then implementing those with fidelity and holding each other accountable to be able to implement this fidelity. We should never be in a district that spends almost $20,000 per student, no parent should have to pay for tutoring in order for their child to be on grade level. Here we are in this state. And so my personal would be to make sure that we are implementing rigorous curriculum in every single course, in every single classroom, every day.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Christina. I mean, $20,000 per student with a budget of $700 million, there is absolutely no excuse to have any child, regardless of their race, nationality, religion, legal status, mental physical challenges, there's no excuse for any chap, for any child to be below where they're supposed to be in our schools. And if we can't figure it out, then we've got some bigger problems. And that's why everyone up here is talking about data, talking about looking at the programs and evaluating them critically to make sure that the programs are working. If they're not working, then change them. But we can do that if we continue to sort of bury our head in the head of the sand and refuse to take a hard look at what we're actually doing.
So APS has recently hired someone in department instruction or regional learning to work on partnerships with, within the community, with our businesses. And like I stated earlier myself, I've been tutoring with AHC at Harvey Hall since 2006. And, you know, people in Arlington, you know, they love to volunteer, but sometimes they just don't know where to go. And so we need to create a streamlined mechanism for folks, businesses, to be able to go into our schools, go into our community centers to help those children whose parents either don't have the ability or don't have the financial need to provide that extra assistance.
We have a model school in Arlington called Carlin Springs. It is a.
Is that?
Okay. Is that? Okay. There. We have a model school here in Arlington that's called our Carlin Springs. It is a community school. It's a school in which it has partnered with all of the community servers that can begin and do tutoring and they have job, that's my reading just lost, sorry. They have opportunities to learn about careers, parents can come in, there's all kinds of social services that might be available. It's brought into the school. This idea of the community school has actually been, been brought forward by the Budget Advisory Council, for instance, that this is the way we might need to start addressing the needs of those schools that have more, that have more demands than the rest of our schools have. So that's the direction I would support going, is to develop more tutoring schools in Arlington so that parents don't feel repelled to have to go in that direction. But I also put it in blood for our literacy program. We are growing a strong literacy program in Arlington and I believe we can close the opportunity gap once we get everything in place where we have all of our schools delivering the same literacy instruction.
Well, Sandy, thanks, hello, I'm sorry. There we go. Sandy, thank you for mentioning Carlin Springs because I tutor a lot of those kids there two days a week for Carlin Springs. The, the main thing is, let's not reinvent the wheel. We have so many, we have so many elementary schools in Arlington County that why don't we figure out what's working and mimic that, that model? We have ATS that's working, we have the, the old Patrick Henry, there's a Title I school that was working to, to help educate our kids and make them literate and make them on grade reading level and on the math reading level. Why don't we just grab those models, see what worked, and we don't have to reinvent the wheel? So, let's, let's put our heads together, figure out how to do it and move forward that way.
Do you think Arlington has a school-to-prison pipeline? Why are we not? How should we view that position?
The answer is unfortunately yes. When you look at the data and you see that there is.
Area.
Sorry, how about this? Any better?
Yeah.
Thank you. So, disappointingly, the answer is yes. I wish I could tell you no. And I hope that in, in four years, when I'm back here, I can tell you no. But the answer is now yes. When you look at the, the statistics and the data and you look at the percentage based on race, it's very, very disheartening when you see that there is more severe punishments and discipline for minorities, students of color, and in particular, students with special needs. It's not right. And we're, we're not, we're not getting it better, we're not fixing it. I mentioned earlier on, you know, students with special needs make up nineteen percent of the student population when you factor in IUP and 504s. How is it possible that they are being, that forty-two percent of suspensions is that small category of nineteen percent? It's completely disproportionate. And it's no different when you look at students of color and other minorities. And so, it needs to be fixed and the answer is unfortunately yes.
Sadly, many of the kids I mentor, especially down here in the valley, have been arrested when they were in high school for incidents, actions that, you know, that their kid would have either gotten suspended for a day or maybe gotten detention or just been told to cool down. I had one kid, they're all grown men now, who was, he wasn't fighting, he was around the fight, jumping up and down and shouting as a kid, as most kids do during fights. A lot of us probably did. And he was arrested by the police. So yeah, we do have a problem. You know, the biggest one is the fact that, you know, the teachers and the faculty use the police officers to discipline the students, whereas the, the teachers need to be the ones doing the discipline.
I said earlier something about this. I said that in fact I was thrilled to see that the laws being changed down in the, in the House and in the Senate. And that no longer will a fight in school end up being a misdemeanor and they will not be arrested and taken out in handcuffs. The, the question goes to, I think, two things. One, we do have implicit bias still in our schools. We do need to continue to have cultural competency in professional development. A one-shot of cultural competency is not an inoculation, we need to have sustained professional development. We need to have consistency within our disciplinarian, our disciplinarians, who are our administrators, our VPs, our assistant principals, and our principal. So I think the buck has got to stop with that.
So according to our strategic plan, we are monitoring the disproportionate suspension rate. And we are going through it and each, each year we are looking at it to, to figure out whether it is going down or not. So it already has been acknowledged and it already is, there are steps that are going on to, to make it, I guess more proportionate would be the better, best answer, I'd best word to that. However, we need to do it quicker. And on top of that, we have, we have an MOU with the police department with APS. And we monitor those numbers on a yearly basis. We need to do that with more transparency and we need to do that in a, with better intervals between times that we review those. You know, as, as the only candidate up here with, with boys of color, that's in the, those are the, the key people in the school-to-prison pipeline. So it matters to me more than, than most of you guys. So I, I, we have restorative justice coming to Arlington. Those of you who know, Leanne Roselle, she has done open times, I'm sorry, Restorative Arlington, she is speaking on Wednesday, March 18th, for those of you who want to know about restorative justice practice. Thank you.
I want to go over time if I ever ask for that slide. So thank you.
Seven, seven to nine PM at W N L. Sorry.
Good point, good point. I agree that we need to reassess our agreement with ESR Os on a more regular basis. I, I also agree that we need to begin, we need to really implement restorative justice systemically across APS. I think the other thing that we need to do is we need to unpack how it is that students are enacting these behaviors to begin with. When I was a teacher, I had the unfortunate circumstance of losing a child to gun violence. It was my second year of teaching and I lost a student to suicide because he had not gotten the mental health services he needed. But he needed a lot of times when students act out or behave in ways that ultimately results in them ending up in the principal's office or with an SRO, it's because of an underlying problem that has not been addressed. So in addition to making sure that we are analyzing the data, that we are making sure that we're following up and that we're asking questions about why our data don't, are not matching up, we need to make sure that we're providing the services that our students need so we're not seeing the issues that are, that are causing the interaction to begin with.
Next question, this will be our last question. Again, I encourage you to come out to the candidate forums, all of the candidate events that are being held by different organizations. List three qualities that you possess that will make you an effective school board member and why are they important? Will you turn your up?
Dedication, strategic planning, and loyalty.
Demonstrative communication and facilitation of increase and collaboration. I have proven skills in the business side of school and how schools develop and for, for what their plans are like. Also, I feel like I have bond leadership.
All right. So, three qualities. So I'd say I have my perspective, which you will hear in my closing remarks. I have a genuine honesty that, that will come through as well. And I'm business acumen, that will help in the school.
On my, I have a background in strategic planning, that is what I do professionally and it's the way that my brain thinks. I'm listening, I'm an empathetic listener and if you ever sat with me and told me a problem that you might have or a story, you know that I ask good questions and I will sit there and I will listen to you. I'm also a hard worker. I've proven time and time again. I've proven time and time again that I'm not afraid of getting in the trenches and doing the hard work, even when it's not fun, when it's not sexy, when it requires being out in the rain, and moving yard signs, and things like that. I have done all those things, I'm happy to continue doing all those things, and being that kind of a hard worker will make me an excellent school board member.
So the three traits that I would bring to the school bar is, one, one of the others is passionate, and I'm a fighter. You guys heard me speak, even some of these issues that are not terribly exciting, or not terribly sexy, I care a lot about. It's hard to talk passionately about teacher compensation, or number, or the budget, but I really care a lot about this. And I, I don't have same depth of background in the education system as some of the other candidates do, but I am a really, really passionate person, and I fight really, really hard. I also have a very open mind. And one of the benefits of not being part of campaigns, or part of the schools, for a long period of time, is that my ideas are still forming, I still want to get all the data. I don't come with any preconceived ideas or notions. And the last point I'll make is that, when I combine the passion and the mindedness together, I'm a critical thinker.
Alright, I think that was everybody. Let's get our candidates around the block. Education can hurt the health situation. We're playing tests the boundaries of our technical hours, but I also, if you want to give a shout out for a sentence, for a student, for a good one, also power for doing time. So that brings us to the end of our meeting. I want to thank everybody for coming out. Please be sure, if you've not yet known a dumb Trump sign, to take it outside.
Closing statements?
Remember, it's important, Steven, it's not gonna be over in a week, guys. Billy, Billy, Diddy, Barbed Doors! Also key, Billy, sorry. Okay, my bad, we're gonna do close statements. David first, folks, sit down, please. My bad, it's totally my bad.
Should I use a mic?
Yeah, yeah. Alright, we're gonna do close statements. Two minutes each for the candidates, and then I promise you can go, go on a serious K-Bar Door.
Thank you. I figured it's easier using this thing than, than those. So, I have a vision to achieve equity in APS, and a plan to go along with it. I have a vision for dealing with the planning and capacity issues, and how I will collaborate to bring the school board forward to take APS into the future. I will reiterate what I've said. I am asking for your vote, because I am the right person who has a history with APS, growing up in Arlington, with kids in middle school and elementary school. I have a perspective that no one else brings to the table. I'm involved in, in active in the inner workings of APS, and I have the business acumen, which is a much-needed presence dealing with $700 million budgets. We need more forward-thinking and proactive leadership, rather than reactive leadership. Someone like myself, who has proven he can move the needle and get things done. In closing, I am David Pritti. I ask for your support, and I ask for your vote in May.
Yeah, I'm gonna leave a second one too. So I want to start by thanking everyone for sticking around, and asking such wonderful questions. Ultimately, the decision of who you're gonna vote for is deeply personal one, but the fact that you're still standing and sitting in this room at 9:15 PM on a Wednesday night in March, says a lot about how much we collectively believe in education here in Arlington. Thank you so, so much for still being here. Growing up in a family who lived around a lot, I always thought about where I was gonna pick to plant the down roots, and it's always been a huge deal for me. I always know that I wanted to find a place that shared my values, where I could feel welcome, and where I could have a voice and positive impact on our community. Arlington has proven to be just that place, and I'm excited for the opportunity to take my talent and experience and serve you in a new capacity on the board. As I've mentioned before, and as I've seen in my answers tonight, I would bring a number of unique perspectives and experiences to the board. I am an educator, a data analyst, a strategic planner, and a lover of numbers and the budget. We are at a crossroads in APS. Do we choose to lean in and address our challenges head-on, even if it requires difficult conversations and changing our mindset, or do we rest on our laurels and accept the status quo? If we ever expect to create solutions that work for our diverse community, we need to have decision-makers with different perspectives and a range of experiences at the table. I would love the opportunity to be with all of you, and be one of your first two choices on May 7th or May 9th. You can sign up for email updates or visit my website at christinaforArlington.com to learn more. My team and I will be around afterwards if you have questions, or if you want to get involved. I am Christina Diaz Torres. Let's build an Arlington Public Schools that serves all of our students well.
Thank you for sticking around and listening to us talk some more. Let me spend a few minutes talking to you about what distinguishes me from other candidates. As you all know, there are two votes for the caucus in May. First, I have enough of these children to go run. I have skin in the game, and I will bring the elementary school and preschool views and present it, something a long-term perspective, because my kids will be in APS the longest. Number two, I'm an attorney. I have my own law firm. I have moved my own law firm because I saw an equitable issue that I wanted to try to solve. People couldn't afford archaic attorneys, but had legal trouble. They have some money, but not enough to hire an archaic attorney, and too much money to qualify for the resources in our community offerings. So my law firm opened up, we have a sliding scale fee structure, that allows someone to come to my firm, get legal counsel for a rate they can afford. It's an equitable solution to a real-life problem. I want APS to follow their policies. I think it would be easier to get the board to do that if there was an attorney on the board. You already heard me talk about the boundary issue, but you may not be aware of the DOJ settlement with, with APS, because of the English learner dispute and Thomas Jefferson. You may not be aware that APS is currently failing to inform and train our bus drivers of the needs of students with disabilities who are buying those same buses. It's only a matter of time before an incident occurs on a bus with a driver who is not properly trained. I, just like I'm holding APS accountable, I really want you to hold me accountable. And that's why I try relatively, I try to be very clear and specific about the actual items that I want to put forward. And I'm focused on operations, because I think the solutions to the most pressing issues that APS is facing are operation-based. But if you're an education policy person, that's totally fine, there are two seats, there are two, you get two votes in May, I would like to ask you for one of your votes, and I would like you to go to vote for someone you think would complement me well.
When I moved Arlington in 2005, I immediately immersed myself in Democratic politics, becoming active with AYD, ACDC, Kitchen Crew, the Congressional District Steering Committee, DPBA, and DNC. For several years, I led ACDC outreach efforts, having won its annual outreach award for two consecutive years, and began its tradition of having a booth at Green Valley Community Day. I've been a youth and education advocate here in Arlington since 2006, and tutored and mentored kids of several ethnic groups, religions, and socioeconomic backgrounds in home lives. Some of my kids are now teachers and faculty at APS. Being married and becoming a stepfather has provided me an additional perspective as to the workings of APS. Our role as educators is to provide every resource possible to our students for them to attain success as they define it, whether it be college, the trades, the military, or entering the workforce. Doing so will take partnering with our unions, local businesses, and government agencies, along with creating operational and budgetary efficiencies in APS and our schools. Educating our students is a challenging reward, one that I cheerfully do as a volunteer, and look forward to continuing to do as a member of your school board. Thank you.
Mine's gonna be kind of a soft landing kind of closure. I want to first of all say thank you to my lovely friends who came to support me tonight, my daughter and my husband, who have been hugely helpful. And thank you all for listening to me and my ideas this evening, I appreciate that very much. I knew I wanted to be an English teacher when I was in 10th grade. I had such a crush on an English teacher that I worked really hard to impress him. And I impressed him so much, that he invited me to his wedding, to my daughter. I'm a teacher, okay? Now, while I may have lost my crush, I never lost my direction. After forty years, I can say I have been dedicated to what is best for our children in public education, versus an English teacher, and then professional development, and of course, instructional technology. I have spent twenty years right here in Arlington Public Schools. Two of my amazing grandchildren live right here, and they attend the Ashland Elementary School. My husband and I don't just have roots here, we have fruit. My connection to Arlington and APS is deep and enduring. My classroom days are behind me, but my passion for education remains. My desire to advocate for my children and yours is still strong, and my commitment should be apparent as I stand or sit here before you and ask for your vote. Let me bring my experience to serve you on our school board. Thank you.
For not anything-